On the other side? Greg, you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Call to order, the city council meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amanda.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Mochaski.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Mark Bittner.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Doug Brandt.
Tim Petrie.
And Bonnie and Shannon are absent.
Okay, thank you for that. Onto number four, we can skip over because they're both excused and will not be dialing tonight. We have no public hearing tonight, so we'll skip over number five. And number six, input from the public. If anyone is here that wishes to speak, you can stand up to the podium on your left. And there's nobody here, so we can...
Someone from staff wanting to speak.
Yeah, I was just saying if I got a staff that'll come up and give their input or anything, come on up. Okay, seen now, and we'll go on to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Adam.
I had several about the Unimar property. I know it's on the agenda tonight, but most of them just inquiring if we're going to get anything done. One person was not in favor of the extension. But that was pretty much my communications for the week.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll go on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Darla?
As far as environmental advisory board, nothing really new to report. For Main Street, just mark your calendars for Friday, December 13th, for ribbon cutting for the quilt shop of Two Rivers at their new location. And also, there's going to be a ribbon cutting in open house on Thursday, November 21st, for Dr. Nadine at Bump and Beyond Family Wellness, which will be located at 2848 Memorial Drive, Suite 9. The ribbon cutting is going to be at 4 o'clock, and they have some great special offers. Christmas parade is coming up. So far, it's grown to 48 parade entries, and they still have room for more. They are going to have three categories for awards. Best use of lights, best band, and judges' choice, best use of theme. Just remember that November is Shop Small November. And I'm sure Greg's going to tell you all about Cool City Christmas and tree decorating. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Darla. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Adam.
Personnel and finance, we pretty much have the budget wrapped up for the most part. Tuesday morning, tomorrow, we will finalize the borrowing portion of it and the rest of the general fund. Those are the last two things. That meeting starts at 8:00 a.m. right here in council chambers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else. Onto number nine, city manager's report. Greg?
Okay, starting off with kind of a stormy-looking Neshota Beach photo. Thanks again to Jeff Dawson, our library director. On the personnel front, the police department is currently recruiting for the full-time position of police clerk and evidence custodian. That is a very responsible position in the police department administrative team. So that recruitment is out there right now. The, we are out for the third go-round of recruitment on community development director, city planner, with some additional outreach activity going on there. And actually, this is old news in the center there. That relates to the city manager search committee, and there is a recommendation on tonight's agenda regarding consultant selection in that, in that effort. We congratulate our city clerk and human release, human resources director, Amanda Baronbrook, on her designation as a Wisconsin certified municipal clerk. She's earned the necessary points in categories of continuing education through the Clerk's Institute in tandem with her undergraduate program, career and lifelong learning experiences, and adherence to the Wisconsin Municipal Clerk's Code of Ethics. We have received in October, letter confirming her status as a certified clerk. So congratulations to Amanda. If you live in, or have tried to drive through the north central part of town around 31st, 32nd, 33rd Street, between Tannery and Adams, you will know that our scattered site lead water lateral replacement project is well underway. Mammoth Construction was awarded that contract back in May of this year. It anticipates replacing 300 public side services. That's the part that's city responsibility from the main to the curb stop. We anticipate 200 private side services and a number of sanitary laterals incidental to water service replacement. If they're in proximity to a water service that's being replaced, the city at city expense is replacing the sanitary lateral within the right-of-way. If the homeowner wants to avoid, if they've got an old lateral and wants to avoid the unfortunate circumstance of having to dig it up in the future should it fail, they can opt to do so, and that is at homeowner cost. They're early in the contract. As of Friday of last week, 29 public-side laterals have been replaced. Zero, public sides, excuse me, zero private sides so far, and 16 sanitary laterals within the right-of-way. So it's going to be a whole lot of patching going on. Matt, do you know, is Mammoth hoping to continue right on through the winter, or into the winter at least with this? Yep, so there may be some gravel patches out there that can't get concrete back in them, but this is a contract that will continue into 2025. And we'll be back in front of council, maybe spring of 2025, with yet another contract proposal for scattered site laterals, generally on the east side. Waiting for final word on our applications for loan monies and principal forgiveness monies through the safe drinking water program. Didn't have a great picture. We need a drone photo of Roosevelt Avenue, but bottom line, the project is completed, looking good. Looking forward to seeing some tree planting happen along that street come spring. Sandy Bay Highlands Phase 3 infrastructure, as noted here from our city engineer, the sanitary sewer main and laterals are extended now from Lake Breeze Way up Orchard Lane to the north, and then down Raleigh Court to the west. Goal was to get that section in first, ideally by Thanksgiving. Water main and services have likewise been installed in that area, north from Lake Breeze, along Orchard to Raleigh Court and down Raleigh. Some grading and gravelling has been completed on Orchard Lane near Lake Breeze. They're starting storm sewer work on Orchard Lane to, last week, last Friday, excuse me. And expect to see the remainder of the storm sewer work and grading and gravelling, with little luck, done around Thanksgiving or into early December. Then advanced construction, the contractor hopes to continue on north on Orchard Lane, and then connecting west to Sandy Ridge Drive in December. We'll see how the weather continues to cooperate on that, but pipes going in the ground over there. The Central Park West Ice Skating Loop was reinstalled a couple weeks back by our Parks and Rec staff. It, it all fit. It's la, it's laid down again, and the rink is now open daily from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The restrooms from 9:00 to 6:00 daily. And the schedule is shown here on the calendar for skate rentals. And that, Mike, that is commencing the Christmas parade weekend, right? Thanksgiving weekend?
Yes, December schedule.
Right. Okay, very good. And then, as you can see there, Friday nights, Saturdays, and Sundays throughout December. And we'll, that'll be updated with schedule into January. The electric department in December will start their annual tree pruning program. This year's focus is on the east side, east of the East Twin River, and that'll continue through winter into the spring. That's, has it started already, or? Okay, notices this week and commencing after Thanksgiving, 1st of December, in there. We did have closings, this, this wasn't listed quite right on the agenda, and that was my error, on various borrowings related to water and sewer, as previously authorized by council. Last week, Wednesday, the 13th, we closed on $1.3 million in 20-year borrowing at 0.25%. That's for the lead lateral replacements, both public and private sides, thanks to the state's new initiative on low-interest financing for those laterals. And then skipping down to the bottom, also last week, Wednesday, was a closing on $1.9 million in revenue bonds at 2.2% interest for 20 years. That's to cover sewer work, both Roosevelt Avenue sewer main and laterals, and those scattered site sanitary laterals, the portion within the right-of-way, when those get done in tandem with the scattered water lateral replacements. Going back to September 25th, they're in the middle of the slide. September 25th, we did close on the council-authorized borrowing, $942,000 roughly, at 2.365% interest for 20 years for the Roosevelt Avenue water main. So a lot of borrowing, a little bit of principal forgiveness, not much on these loans, but as you can see with some of the federal funds that are flowing to the state for safe drinking water and clean water fund borrowing, it's very favorable interest rates on that, on that investment. Also, last week, Friday, closing occurred on the purchase of 1303 19th Street. That was a purchase from Jay and Mary Strew. It's the last standing building out of the old Eggers complex. The city had secured an option to purchase that 18,000-square-foot parcel back in 2018. That was, that option was part of the purchase agreement for the, when the city bought the three-and-a-half-acre former Eggers Downtown Plant Site. This was a separate parcel. The city had that option. Council earlier this year authorized, exercising the, actually, two years ago, I'm sorry, authorized exercising the option earlier this year. Most of you will recall a budget amendment that set money aside in this year's budget for the purchase. That has about a 7,400-square-foot concrete block warehouse building in very good shape, with a good roof on it, that I'm sure will get some interim use for storage by Parks and Rec notably, until redevelopment happens. But again, the overall goal with acquiring this property is, as the city looks to redevelopment of the, in the near term, we hope, the former Eggers Downtown Plant Site, and eventually the Hamilton Plant Site. That option price of $88,500, which came out of the Harbor Master Plan Implementation Fund, Capital Fund, that reflected the assessed value of this property back in 2018, when the option was secured. I would just note, I only checked it this afternoon, but the assessment in the recent revale came in at $120,000. So that is now, this is an addition to my report tonight. On Wednesday night of this week, out at Port Sandy Bay, there's a K-9 program fundraiser. 15% of all proceeds will go to the TRPD K-9 program. And that program continues to have great support. We appreciate Port Sandy Bay's support. So no excuse, you don't need to be cooking dinner. You can get on out to port to enjoy pizza or something else out there in support of the K-9 program. A Cool City Christmas will be in December on a Saturday again this year. But, and in addition, this year, there is Cool City Christmas Tree Decorating Contest, which will be setting up on Thanksgiving weekend in Central Park East, out here in front of City Hall. For a registration fee of $10, a family or a group, civic club, a church, any entity can get the right to decorate one of 30 trees. I think there are 10 still available as of today, talking to Rebecca over at Parks and Rec. Select a theme, decorate your tree on the weekend of Thanksgiving, family-friendly, please. And judges will very quietly go out and evaluate the entries based on originality and appearance and something else. I forget, oh, right there, creativity, theme, and originality. Just read the slide, Greg. And the, those awards will be in parade on Saturday night. So thank you very much to the Spraying family, the Spraying Christmas Tree Operation, which donates generously to a lot of programs in the community. As soon as they heard about this opportunity, they indeed are donating the 30 trees that'll go out in the park. A community Thanksgiving meal over at the TR Senior Center on Thanksgiving Day at noon. Registration deadline has passed. That was back on November 7th. I know there's a good number of people that are set up as volunteers. Thank you to the senior center and all the, all the supporters that make this possible. As Darla mentioned, Shop Hometown. Shop Small November is intended to go all month long. Shop Small Saturday is Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend. But honestly, our downtown warrants your support throughout the Christmas shop. Shop Small November being promoted by Main Street with our local downtown. And yes, the Main Street Organized Hometown Christmas Parade, Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, Saturday, November 30. Parade steps off at 5:30 p.m. Units will gather north of 22nd on Washington Street. We do have the city council signed up as participants again this year. And as we get just a little closer, Val from my office will send out a remind you, a reminder, and then just confirm who plans to walk or ride in the parade. And we know Bonnie's already stocking up on candy that she can wing at the observers sitting on the curbs. So the rest of you, just be gentle. Second Annual Cool City Christmas, Saturday, December 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Central Park West. Thanks to the generosity of sponsors, we again have not only Santa and his elves, but live reindeer from 12:30 to 3:30. The Christmas carols will be provided by the high school chorus. They did a great job last year, not only in the park, but in the gym, where the craft fair's going on and making appearances at downtown businesses. Skates will be available for rent at the skating loop. Stop by the Rotary tent to make a holiday craft and visit the Warming Fires. They'll again be offering kits for smores this year. There'll be face painting, a family photo booth, craft fair filling the inside of the community house. This is also tied into Candy Cane Hunt and Scavenger Hunt. You can visit downtown businesses and restaurants to search for candy canes, get scavenger hunt cards. The whole idea is to get downtown, enjoy the holidays in our, in our community, and boost the downtown, benefit the downtown businesses. There'll be activities also over at Washington House with live music upstairs in the grand ballroom. So last year's event was absolutely magic, and we're hoping for the same even better this year. Thank you to all of the event sponsors, including name-sponsored community first credit. It's the season. And pretty much, I think I'm coming to the end here, wrapping up my presentation. Kudos to the many city departments, electric parks, public works, city hall, who am I skipping? Public Works, Parks and Rec Utilities, electric utility, water utility. And I think Daisy at least was out there. I don't know if any sworn officers were there, but Daisy was definitely out helping. But most, if not all, of the decorations and downtown lights got put up today. Many hands make for fast work. And I think there's a few electrical connections to be checked yet. That's why the lights are on. They will go off, only to come back on, on the night of the parade. But thanks to everybody for making that happen. That's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Anything under legislative updates?
Oh, you know, I, actually, this might be a good opportunity to ask our water director, water utility director, Andrew Sukawadi, to come forward and talk about approximately 2,200 mailings that have recently gone out. This relates to the lead and copper rule, notices following completion of our inventory. I'll let Andrew speak to that. You may have seen some social media dialogue on this or heard from friends and neighbors who got mail.
So part of the new regulation for the EPA, when we did our service inventory for the city, was they want us to notify anybody in the city that has, has, that we know of, or potentially could have led galvanized services, or if they're unknown, that we have no information on what that are, but is likely to be led. These mailings became mandated that they go out yearly. So the first round went out last week. Most people, I think, probably heard some chatter about it. So we do, I do have the brochures here. I'll just kind of pass around. Hopefully, the camera can kind of pick them up a little bit. The whole point of this was that the EPA wanted to make sure that everybody's being aware of what they have in their home. So we've gotten quite a few calls on them. Some of the unknown ones have just come from the fact that we haven't either been in their home in a long time or we don't have documentation of what was installed at that time. Those are the things that we progressively keep working on to try and fill in our inventory. So there was some questions on this. These will go out yearly, though. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions that they've heard of, but I'll just kind of pass these around so everyone can.
One issue, I'm sorry, Adam.
Did they go to everyone? Or is it just people that may have suspectable lead or copper or whatever?
Yep, so they went out to anybody that we've confirmed has lead or galvanized. And with the unknowns, that went out to ones that we think is likely lead. Any of the ones that we believe are not likely lead or we know are copper did not get them.
Okay.
So not everybody in the community got these. It's just the ones that we know that are potentially on the list that we work for.
I didn't get one, so that's why I asked.
Yep, and that would be exactly why. So if you didn't get it, that's good.
Okay.
I know we've got a couple inquiries from people just, you know, on the program that we've been doing. I do know also that in lieu of next year's activities for lead replacement, the guys are on the southeast part of the town. They're going to start notifying some of the residents there that we can get access and actually visually inspect their services again, just kind of like we did last year on the for the contract that we're doing right now.
That goes inside the house.
Yeah, that would be us just coming in verifying, it only takes about five, ten minutes. But then that actually gives us that visual accuracy to know what they have.
And you're looking for the connection or you're looking to see what kind of material they have in their house?
We're looking for the material that actually comes through the basement floor and hooks up to the meter.
Okay, you're not really concerned with what they have, right?
In the home or?
Right, yes, like in the home running throughout their lines. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Round numbers, we've got about fifty one to fifty two hundred water customers. So twenty two hundred mailings went out. We know, my recollection is we have at least eighteen hundred lead services we know of going into this fall after the Roosevelt Project, so.
Yeah, so we did end up sending out about, I'll say, five hundred extra brochures. We don't believe that there's that many services left in town. It's just how the D and R profile ends up on what their regulations are for what we need to send out for. So some people may have gotten two, depending on if we know the private side but not the public side. So we did end up sending out a few more than we predicted, I guess, that we would, but.
Just to remind folks out there, I know this council is doing its level best to make sure that the city can continue providing funding assistance to offset those private side lead lateral replacements. And so far, that's consistently been at twenty five hundred dollars toward that cost for most homes. That covers the full cost of the water lateral replacement. Again, if there's a decision made at the same time to replace the sewer lateral, there's no assistance program for that. This year, that's been accomplished on this contract we just talked about through city borrowing, tax supported borrowing that this council approved. We're optimistic that next year, based on our application for safe drinking water funding, we'll be seeing enough principal forgiveness provided through through that program that that twenty five hundred dollar subsidy, if you will, grant subsidy, whatever you want to call it, can be continued and quite likely without the city having to borrow any money, but realizing that through principal forgiveness. Over the long term, you know, a lot of changes going on in D C. We know the final lead and copper rule was recently released. Does that stand? What will future years funding commitments be to this? Because even after the contract that's out there now, we'll still have about fifteen hundred lead surface laterals. Even with a decade ahead of us to comply, that's a hundred and fifty a year, and that's mighty expensive. So stay tuned, but staff, as directed by councils, doing our level best to secure the funding and keep providing that assistance to homeowners on the lead lateral replacement. So and other questions, here's the guy. So and customers, feel free to call customer service and they'll direct you to the right person in the water utility. Thank you, Andrew. That really is my presentation. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. On to number ten consent agenda. Under presentation of minutes, we have three. We have the city council regular meeting from October twenty first, twenty twenty four, the city council work session from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and the city council regular meeting from November fourth, twenty twenty four. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. We have the Leicester Public Leicester Public Library from October eighth, Public Works Committee from November sixth, Plan Commission, November eleventh, Personnel and Finance Committee from October tenth, seventeenth and November fifth, Joint Personnel and Finance Committee Utilities Utilities Committee on from November seventh, Board of Canvassers on November sixth, and Committee on Aging, October seventh, and the Business Improvement District Board from November eleventh. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have department reports for November twenty twenty four. We have city clerk, electric, library, parks and recreation, police, public works, tourism and water. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under D, we have finance reports for September twenty twenty four. We have debt services, general fund, Lester Library and Utilities Report. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. And overall, for the whole consent agenda, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with various actions recommended. One thing, Greg, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President and Council. I did with regard to consent agenda item A three, the minutes of the regular council meeting for November four, last regular meeting. I did get an email over the weekend from one of the residents who addressed the council under input from the public, specifically as it relates to page seventeen in your agenda packet. Mister Robitaille, with reference to his comments to council and those of Mister Dahlke. Mister Dahlke was copied on the email I got from Mister Robitaille, noting that while the minutes talked about their concern about the short term rental petition that was directed to council, he felt it would be appropriate to clarify that the concerns were not so much regarding the petition, but the actions of a council member in follow up to the council's receipt of that petition. I volunteered that that seemed to be consistent with what I understood each of their comments to be and offer that modification to the minutes that were prepared by our former now retired deputy clerk. And that is a handout in front of you with the red line with what would be a substitute for page seventeen of the agenda packet. You know, talking with our city attorney this afternoon, clearly the only mandatory legal content for the minutes is official actions of the council. Public input isn't an official action. But if we're going to be consistent with how our minutes are typically presented, which does include who appeared before the council under input and what concerns were raised, it seems appropriate to include this revision. So I offer that for. Parents or not.
Perfect.
In interest in it being totally transparent, following those comments of public input with approval from the attorney saying I could defend myself, I admitted publicly that I was the unknown council member. I didn't want anybody to take blame for my actions. And in fact, I was the unknown council member. I disputed and challenged the claims of some of the things that they said about me seeking a signature petition. I also stressed the fact that I discussed the actions with my legal attorney, with the city attorney to see if, in fact, I was in violation of any code of conduct or petition rights. And as I was, I wasn't as elected official, I have the rights to talk to constituents of the community. And didn't challenge them to sign, and I just wanted sought sought their opinion of the situation. So if you want to add that. Michael.
That would be at the discretion of the council.
So then we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, considering Mark's requests as well to be add those to the notes from the city council regular meeting for November fourth.
Those be added to the minutes for today, though. They were per the minutes of the last one. They'd have to be added to today's minutes.
Well, he did say it during that meeting too, and they weren't in the minutes.
Well, they would have to go back and whatever he said, not what was all said there.
Right, it would have to go back to the recording then and see. Or we just include those, like Adam said, in the meeting minutes for tonight and then the present.
Whatever council decides.
Okay.
Better to have.
Yeah, absolutely, they'll be in tonight's as well. Yes, absolutely.
Because we can, you rightfully kind of cut them off at that time.
Correct, okay, yeah, that's perfect, it's fine.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, looking for a second. Any council discussion?
That's adopting with the red line as shown.
Correct.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make sure. Yep, okay. See no discussion, I will do an all favorite indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to eleven, city council formal items. First one is an ordinance to amend section four dash one dash four of the municipal code regulating construction and repair of sidewalks within the city based on the recommendation of the public works director and the public works committee.
If we, if you don't mind, perhaps Mister Heckenlebel could come forward and give you some of the history on this, which now does come with his recommendation and that of the public works committee.
Good evening. Over the summer months, we had some complaints regarding primarily vegetation and accessibility of some of the sidewalks throughout the city. So we looked into what our current ordinance had available as far as being able to enforce, and there was nothing on the in the ordinances. So we had some internal discussions at the committee level and then ultimately presented that to our legal team. And we came up with the ordinance revisions that are in front of you tonight. The biggest change is under parent B, clearing and edging of sidewalk. So as to completely remove any sediment, plant material, rock or other obstructions which reduce the visible surface of the sidewalk to a width of less than ninety percent of the sidewalk. So on our standard five foot four inch sidewalks, that will give you about six inches of overgrowth, if you want to call it that. So ideally, the sidewalks are completely cleared of vegetation, but there is that buffer of ninety percent. The other changes or clarifications, longstanding practice is offset joints in sidewalks is three quarters of an inch of elevation difference. Vegetation of terrace trees over top of sidewalks needs to be at least eight feet or greater. And then if we notice violations, we have to give the statutory requirement notice in writing of at least twenty days. So that are, that is a summary of the changes being proposed in front of you.
I have a question. I know that we used to have a sidewalk program when we had enough time and people to go around the city and take out different locations, little areas that they would look at. And I remember one thing that was a concern was spalling. Is that something that you want? Put into this as well?
Sorry, what was that?
Yeah, it's like when the top of the the cement is like flaking off.
Okay, gotcha, sorry.
I know that was part of the, it was, it was one of the things to look out for.
That would be additional sidewalk maintenance as far as defects, and that is still part of our sidewalk repair policy. So as staff goes around and checks areas, we look for severe cracking of the actual concrete cakes, the spalling, offset joints, things of that nature.
Any other questions for Matt? Yes, Adam.
Um, I do like A and B. I think those look fairly good. Under C, are we, were we always at that mark of three quarters of an inch?
That is our current practice, yes. I, I too agree that it could be, in my opinion, shrunk down, but that is what is in our current policy.
Okay, and then on to D. So we're expecting the residents to trim the trees that are in the terrace?
The terrace trees are trimmed by our Park and Rec Department. Private trees that overhang, the sidewalk also need to be at that eight foot level.
So from the property of?
The homeowner or property owner.
I wonder if we can clarify that more because to me, it looks like I would be responsible for the terrace as well. It just says trees.
That the terrace trees are covered under the Park and Recreation's ordinance. So there is a distinction.
Okay. And then the other thing I really don't like about that is the is the trees that in the terrace, a lot of them do upheave the the sidewalk. But yet the homeowner is responsible for replacing the sidewalk, but the homeowner can't take out the tree.
Uh, recent practice for the past two years, pretty much since I've been here, we've been, the city or public works has been replacing the sidewalk panels impacted by tree growth. And depending on the tree, we will either cut the roots or have the tree removed. Or work other magic, get an easement, work around the tree, depending on the the tree significance and things of that nature.
Oh, then the last couple of years, the city is taking that maintenance on.
Correct.
Okay. And then I guess the only other one is E, any other maintenance or repair deemed reasonable and necessary by public works director. It would be nice to kind of define that so people know what to expect. Because there, you know, you may, you could, I would read that as as a resident, as a lay resident that where he could just make something up and say, well, I deem it reasonable and necessary.
Again, we fall back to our sidewalk replacement policy, which calls out the spalling, as Darla had noted, the cracking, things of that nature. So that too is a written document that we just don't make up on the fly.
Oh, okay, because the only document I have in front of me is the one I'm reading, so it doesn't outline any of those things.
Policies aren't part of ordinance. So policies are internal documents and the policy is on our public works webpage.
Right, but the things you're incorporating are referencing back to those policy, which I don't have in front of me. So I don't know that. When I, when I read it, that's how I read it. And anyone else that has the agenda at home is reading it and probably reading it the same way. Because they also don't have that policy in front of them that refers back to it. Or under E, it should say, in conjunction with the policy and wherever you can find that policy. So it makes makes it more clear that that's where they're looking for such.
Or even have something that's like, go ahead.
Should be according to that or.
Yeah, just the reference of where we're referring back to when you say it's already in our ordinance would make it easier, I guess, because then I wouldn't have had as many questions because I'd have said, okay, well, it refers back to an ordinance. So right now, I don't know that it looks like we're redoing an ordinance because that's what's on the agenda. We have a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance, which isn't citing any other ordinance to refer back to under F for maintenance.
We're not citing an ordinance under F, we're citing or referring, referencing in indirectly our sidewalk replacement policy.
Well, it says F maintenance and the agenda says motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
Correct, the ordinance is what you have in front of you.
Right, but it's not referencing the policy. It's tough to change an ordinance if you're not referencing what policy you're changing. That's, that's my problem. It should just cite where in the what you're referencing. When you go back to the two that I pointed out under D and E, it should go back and reference.
For trees, it's going to vary. If it's private trees, it's referring to this. For trees, it's going to vary. If it's private trees, it's referring to this ordinance. If it is terrace trees, it refers back to our park, rack and forestry ordinances.
Right. I get that now.
So if, uh, for some reason, the park, rack and forestry ordinance would get updated, numbering changes, then you have to make sure that the cross-reference is applicable throughout the ordinance. So that's part of the problem with cross-referencing all these ordinances.
They could still reference that. So when you, when parks and rec changes theirs, it would still reference their changes. That's what I'm saying.
I, I think this is a good discussion because you raised some points that a lot of people, community and social media responded to and questioned about. But in fact, um, the only thing new about this ordinance is B. Yeah, that's the only new addition and change. Everything else is existing. Uh, and there are way, there are issues that could refer to, uh, other ordinances and answer the question that's showing the public is not responsible at all for. Uh, but there is, um, some confusion the way, uh, I think publicly.
Yeah, because even.
Now we have the answers. It's not the case, but, um, there was some initial confusion. But now it's clarified in my mind.
Yeah, because so under A, you, you reference section four dash one dash six. But in the rest of them, when you refer back to the policy, you don't have anything in there to reference back to. I mean, I like A and B. I do. I, I, I think they're good additions, but the rest of the ordinance isn't real clear as far as the policy we're referencing back to.
Understood. I wonder if that's something we shall take back to the public works committee to update, look at?
Or you can modify it on the fly.
Or we can modify it on the fly.
I guess the other thing, and you, you don't want, have to create too many of these. I know when we talked about the driveway ordinance, we talked about some other cities and on that one have a guide that's sort of a, a citizen's guide because there are sections that pertain to your curb cut and driveway opening within the public right of way, which is in the public work section of the code, the driveway on private property, which is in the zoning portion of the code. That could be, it could be addressed likewise in something like a, and I know this just adds another brick to the load too, but, you know, citizens' guide to maintaining sidewalks and plantings near the right of way.
And that's what's out on our website right now is, uh, basically our sidewalk replacement policy. Um, as how, uh, what kind of, uh, concrete, um, depth of concrete. Right now, the policy reads, uh, sidewalks impacted by trees are uh, homeowner's responsibility. That's been changed, but the policy has not been updated.
Just a thought, but somewhere, so there's a go-to place.
Yep, that makes it easier for people to see and understand.
It's an FAQ, a special section on the website, or, uh, or that special section could be in the form of a downloadable publication.
Which it is right now.
It is. Okay.
Is everything else? Sorry, Darla, go ahead. I've been speaking enough.
I, I'm going to go back to what I said before with the like spalling and cracks and all that. Um, could you put something in there that, you know, uh, more detail refer to, um, the city sidewalk policy? And it'll give you more detail as to what exactly, because you read this and it looks like it's just, um, a difference in height is going to be the issue. And, uh, you know, for the trees, refer to the current parks and rec policy, tree policy or what have you. And instead of changing the wording in, in the ordinance to be very specific, which would really cause a real headache, if the other policy changes, then you gotta, it has to follow through. Just refer to the most current one, and then that way you've got it written down. You don't have to worry about updating all, you know, the whole thing.
I don't know if it helps, but if we, if we tried it on the fly, uh, E, any other maintenance or repair deemed reasonable and necessary by the public works director per other provisions of the municipal code or adopted policies of the city? Uh, if notice of the same is served. I mean, that still doesn't tell you what it is, but it does say that there's a body of law in the ordinances and there are city policies that go beyond where you're reading here. But that's just kind of a generic reference.
Yeah, I think it should be more clear. I mean, are we only changing A and B? Is everything else in here?
The only thing we're changing really is B. We're adding the language regarding the vegetation coverage because in some cases we had sidewalks impacted by fifty percent.
If everything else doesn't have to be changed because it's already here, well, why don't we just amend to change B?
Yeah, that's fine. And that's, that's.
Totally what you're doing, isn't it?
No, we're just adding B to it.
We're, we're primarily adding B. I mean, uh.
Scrap the rest of it. If everything else is the same, why can't we scrap it and just do B? Seeing it's confusing right now anyway.
Scrap the rest of it.
Well, we don't, we, we, well, no, just, we'll just vote to amend B.
Okay.
Well, we'll add B in, in under section, uh, four dash one dash four under F. We're going to add B. And that can be the end result of it, then everything else is the same.
I don't have the original ordinance language in front of me, so I don't know exactly if that is kosher. So my recommendation would be to table it or make it go back to committee, and we can address these concerns.
Well, then I say go back to committee. Just to get that referenced out.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Back to the committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. And it has that send it back table to send back to committee. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you all. Uh, let's see, on to B, consider agreement with search consultant to assist with city manager recruitment and selection. Uh, the recommended action is a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a municipal executive search services agreement with public administrative associates of Whitewater, Wisconsin at a cost of seventeen thousand eight hundred, plus additional costs for testing and other supplemental services by the consultant up to fifteen hundred dollars as may be authorized by the city council, city councils, city manager recruitment and selection committee.
I'd refer you, uh, first of all, to the council president's comment. Scott, along with, uh, Mark Bitner, Bonnie Schimmel, Adam Wuhusky, uh, constitute the city manager recruitment selection committee, which is personnel and finance plus one, plus the council president. Um, and Scott certainly can speak to his comments here. I would only offer the, uh, the fifteen hundred dollars additional. It's probably on the high side, but the committee did, uh, express an interest in some à la carte services offered by the consultant, notably some, uh, testing, things like emotional intelligence testing and other things uh, that might be applicable to the finalists.
Remember, they're quite reasonable. They're like fifty dollars apiece too.
Yeah.
So I think we're real high in that number, but.
I would offer a comment too, and we, not to be driven entirely by what you see on social media because there's a whole lot more people in that out in the community. There were some questions about, um, the consultant, uh, soliciting input from community members or having an opportunity for community members to have input on the process. That was discussed by the committee. And, uh, when the consultant comes in to develop uh, a position profile and talk about qualities, folks notably the council want in a new city manager, um, there would be the opportunity for some meetings with members of the community, maybe as simple as letting it be known so folks could come in and meet with them. Um, and, and likewise with the city's department heads. So it is expected there would be some opportunity for community input. And the committee's going to control a lot of that at the front end, say what sort of, what sort of individually you're looking for here. And likewise, perhaps, again, up to the committee, an opportunity when finalists are brought in, whether it's a reception that the public can come to or an opportunity for a meet and greet for the candidates that probably come in for an assessment center. Uh, I certainly heard the committee expressing interest in that input. So with, with that, I'll defer to Scott.
Sure. Yeah, just a couple of other things real quick. Um, we did agree on public administrative associates, uh, PAA. Uh, Mark, Greg and I were there that night. Adam and Bonnie were excused. Um, so it was a, we met with both, um, both firms. The other one was MGT. Uh, but in the end, it was pretty unanimous that was going to be PAA. Uh, like Greg said, um, they're going to help us understand how to all do this. Um, this is something new. We haven't done it for twenty-nine and a half years. Um, so this is something new for the city, new for us as well. So I think I'm very confident that we got a good firm that will be able to help, uh, pick out the right candidates for us. Um, like Greg also mentioned, the committee will work with the firm to try to narrow some things down. But once we start getting candidates, the whole city council will be involved. We'll be able to get people from the public involved as well. Um, yeah, it was a very good interview by PAA. Uh, didn't have any really any concerns with them. They seem to be, um, or they are very local in the area with a nationwide kind of touch too. So, um, it looks like it's a good fit for us. Mark, did you have something else you want to add?
Scott, being present at that meeting, I had a couple of other comments in addition to what you said. Um, and certainly, uh, cost effectiveness, they were the lowest price of the two, two. So that helps. Uh, they also seem to me to have the best screening process of, uh, searching the candidates they bring to us through investigative background checks and, uh, references and review of social media too. That's a big part of it. Um, they, uh, do a lot of under background before they bring us candidates. Uh, they also were totally involved throughout the process with the legal assistance and any questions to everything you said. They want to engage all members of the council to get inputs individually of what we're looking for. And they also had plans and previous experiences on how best engaged the citizens of the community too. It's our choices. It's a community-wide effort and they've had experience.
Correct. Anyone have any questions?
Just note the twenty twenty-five budget as proposed and as presented to the, the person finance committee does include funding to cover the cost of the search consultant. Um, incidental expenses associated with the search, potential relocation package for, uh, a new, uh, a new city manager and, uh, some provision for, uh, overlap between the current incumbent me and, uh, and the new person, which actually the, the feedback was quite honestly, you know, from both consultants who were talked to, uh, it two to three weeks ought to be plenty before it's time to, you know, not create any confusion. It's bad enough having one city manager without two. So I, I think we have more than adequate funds provided and anticipate the, while their typical contract provides for a payment of a third on the, on signature, a third, um, when the materials go out for the position and the final thirdly payment after, uh, an employment agreement is signed. Uh, I, I think this could all be deferred, uh, you know, that first payment until after January one. Because what, if council authorizes it, that's fine, but I don't see them engaging really till.
Right. Yeah, I think they said February is when we really should start the whole process. Okay. Um, yes, Adam.
I just have two things that frustrated me a little bit is I, I know I brought it up before, uh, that we should send it to referendum to see if the citizens want a mayor versus a city manager. And that never really went anywhere even to a vote. And, I mean, there are people that have asked for that. Um, I don't care either which way, really. But it's the people that ultimately pay the bill and that they should really be able to choose what kind of representation, form of government they have. And I really wish that we would throw it out there and, and let them decide. Um, the other thing is, uh, it does look like there's a lack of community feedback, citizen feedback. Um, it looks like it's more geared towards community leaders versus the members of the public, which it'd be nice to get more of their input and get them a little bit more engaged uh, with the process because ultimately that's also who leads their city. But other than that, that's, those are the two things that I took out of it.
Yeah, I think from my point of view, the, the input from the public on the next city manager is important to get their thoughts and considerations too. Anything else? Otherwise, we should do a motion and then we can have council discussion.
Bill had his hand up.
Yeah. If you have a question, go ahead.
Say, this company had.
Hey, and just, the, the question was, what's, what's sort of the norm? How many do you see? I think their expectation was somewhere in the forties, probably based on their experience.
And then they narrowed it down from there for us. It could be from Wisconsin. It could be from anywhere in the US.
Where in the world? Yeah.
Yeah.
Their strongest network is probably in the Midwest. They, they mentioned that each candidate, pre country focused right now on two primary searches in their neighbor cities. Nina, I believe, or the pier and, uh, Ashka. So they've got some local experience.
Any other questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion to authorize city manager to execute a municipal executive search services agreement. Thank you, Doug. Just seconded by. Thank you, Tim. Uh, any council discussion?
Just note for the record that I will vote no just because of the two points that I made, that the form of government should be up, up on the ballot for the people to choose and then the lack of citizen input involved.
Anything else?
I was requested to run for reelection by a number of citizens who want to continue city manager. So let me go on the record saying that there's strong, uh, city.
Yeah, I know I've had, I've had some conversations too, to that aspect too, but. Anyone else? Yes, Darla.
There a protocol for going, um, changing from city manager to mayor that people can follow? You know, is there a, is there a, um?
Petition? Is that what you're thinking? Petition?
Thank you.
I, I, that I don't know unless you're asking the attorney.
But, you know, I, I think there might be something like that out there that we, we should follow. And I think a lot of it falls on the people who want to change it, I believe.
Uh, the attorney can speak to it. Certainly there are provisions. You'd be looking at a charter ordinance and that can either be initiated by action of the council, in which case it has to lay on the table, so to speak, for a period of time. So if people want it on the ballot, there can be a petition. That was the process we went through quite a few years ago when the council initiated a change in council terms from two-year terms to three. Or there is provision for, uh, initiative and referendum, uh, for someone to place it on the ballot. I, I'll be careful what I say, but that option always exists. It doesn't just exist, those options don't just exist at a point when there's a proposed a vacancy coming up in the position. And ultimately, that's your call, or with a petition, that's the community's call. I've not noticed too many mayoral cities in this neck of the woods whenever a term comes to an end saying, let's hit the pause button and see if we want to change form of government. But that's, that's obviously an option out there. It also may speak to how effectively you can recruit a new person if, uh, I on the council's list. Again, that's your call or the citizens' call.
Just to remind everybody, if you have a mayor and they have a city adding, uh, salary to the city, so it costs you a lot more money to go with a mayor. Kind of everybody. Uh, bipartisanship with, uh, so now we have. That with a mayor.
Mark.
For the community, again, there's no guarantee that a city major can't be replaced. Uh, we have procedures that allow a council by majority vote to replace him. We audit his performance and, um, there's nobody up here sitting who rubber stamps any decision make because we all challenge him regularly.
Darla.
I was just going to say, since we're talking about it, the fact that a city manager, um, works at the pleasure of city council. City council is made up of nine people. We're the ones who make the final decision. Um, with a, um, a mayor council setup, the city council can decide on, you know, a, um, how something should be handled. And if mayor doesn't like it, he can veto it. So actually, when you boil it down, you're putting your government into one person's hands. And, you know, I've, I've heard people say, well, we should be able to elect the mayor. Well, what they've done is they've already elected nine people to be on council. Well, what they've done is they've already elected nine people to be on council. So it's not like they're not involved. But, um, I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons. And I think, well, you're starting to send information out in the utility bills just to explain, you know, the differences and the expectations. And you were on TV.
I was, I know some.
Oh, okay. For NBC, well, anyway, but I think, you know, um, for something like this, there should be really, really good public education as to what they would be getting if they changed.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawoski.
No.
Okay. Motion carried. Uh, to C, final plat approval, final approval of plat for Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision number three.
At the last regular meeting, we reported that the approved, the plat with state approval had been received back from the Department of Administration with no objections filed by or requests for changes from the state or from Manitowoc County, who has review authority. The council then referred this matter to the city engineer and plan commission for their recommendations. The plat was in front of the plan commission last Monday, which recommends approval in its final form. You have Mr. Heckin libel's report prepared for the plan commission, council and city manager relative to the plat. Matt be happy to answer any questions you might have. The final plat with everything except approval signatures is in your council packets. So if you have any questions, feel free to fire away. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff and the plan commission is to approve the plat in final form as presented.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Matt?
I have a question. Why did it take so long to get this approved? I mean, what was the holdup?
The big holdup was the Department of Natural Resources and the wetlands that are out there. We knew some of the wetlands going in were part of a legal jurisdictional agreement that we entered into decades ago. And then part of that definition of the wetlands that are out there, the boundaries changed with the current wetland assessment. And the DNR literally made us jump through every hoop possible to get it to where it is today. So that was almost a year in the making to get the wetland approvals.
Once it was, once those were acquired, it was pretty much the standard statutory process that any developer goes through. But it has been a long time coming.
Any other questions for Matt? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve the plat based on the recommendation of the city engineer and the plan commission. Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Second, thank you, sir. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be an all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to D, uh, resolution authorizing conveyance of the thirty-two home sites in Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision number three from the city to the community development authority.
Yes, this resolution was finished up over the weekend by the city attorneys and was sent out to council and there are via email over the weekend. And there are likewise paper copies in front of you. It gives some of the history as to why the city has been involved in the development of this subdivision, identifies from a community development standpoint that there's been a recognized need for single-family development lots in the city because lack of such has impaired the city's growth. Notes, you know, that this is on city property and through zoning and plating and now the installation of municipal infrastructure. The city has acted to make possible residential development. This was written up assuming, if you look at the third whereas, that the council and the state would approve the final plat. And just in, in case you're wondering that, you know, we've been talking about thirty, excuse me, twenty-six lots for a long time. The developed, the infrastructure extensions that council has approved the contract for extend infrastructure to serve twenty-six lots. The phase three area, the plat includes thirty-two. There's six lots that are in that northwest corner that will not be served with the infrastructure from what you've authorized. There's some standard lots and a fairly big one that we may want to do some creative things as far as making it into several home sites. So it does note that the plat was approved that for the plat that creates thirty-two new residential lots, construction's already underway with street and utility infrastructure to serve twenty-six of those. And then goes on to say, council wishes to convey those residential development lots to the CDA consistent with what's been done on phase one and phase two. It's consistent with the intent of the city in creating and operating the CDA with reference to the ordinance. And then there are, there are matters that are resolved on the second page. Transferring the property to the CDA will further the city's goal of increasing availability of lots owned for single-family residential development. Council finds CDA is in the best position to sell lots and otherwise develop the property on behalf of the city. And transfer is in the best interest of the city. And then it goes on to direct the city attorney to prepare a deed and assist in preparing or arrange for the drafting and, excuse me, execution of other closing documents for conveying for a buck to the CDA, the thirty-two parcels identified in the plat. And that's again, is attached as exhibit one and a specific listing of those lots is exhibit two. Council authorizes finally the city manager and city clerk to execute such deed and necessary related documents on behalf of the city. You would note in exhibit two, we talk about the thirty-six lots. No, I'm sorry, the thirty-two lots comprising the, the phase three plat. But this does specifically exclude any outlots. There are three outlots that are platted for stormwater maintenance or maintenance of wetlands. Those need to remain in the city's ownership long-term. In fact, noting that today, it prompted us to say, we should go back and look at the earlier deeds to see if the city or the CDA owns the common areas and outlots in phases one and two. And if there's any issue there, make sure those are under city ownership. So if this is approved tonight, then the CDA will be asked to approve final pricing structure, deal with getting the lots listed and take it from there. So recommend approval. City attorney can speak to any of the details of the resolution if you have them.
Uh, so we are looking for a motion to waive reading adopt the resolution. Anyone wants to? Adam? Looking for a second. Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion?
This is a critical part of our funding process, too, of all the money we're spending for the.
Oh, my two, right? Oh, this.
At sales.
Yeah, I mean, the council's already approved those contracts and the funding sources for them.
This is for community awareness.
This is, right, this would be the culmination of it and would allow the CDA to do what it's been doing for quite a few years now in marketing the lots with the expectation that the revenue stream from lot sales is dedicated to the debt service on the borrowing that was done.
Yes, Adam.
We talked about pricing. Are they following that same pricing structure of those lots?
They are. They haven't adopted the final pricing structure. That's what I hope to take to the CDA. Right now I'm working to see if they, if we can get a quorum on their regular meeting date, which is the fourth Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. But that pricing structure will reflect the intent to recoup the cost to cover debt service. And right now that's looking at fifty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars per lot.
Okay. My only other concern would be, I, I don't think that they should have the ability to cut the cost of those lots. I know we've done that in the past. And I guess my reasoning there is because it's borrowed money. And I want to make sure that everything that we expect when we do this document that should be put back on debt service is going to debt service and not being cut by twenty percent here, twenty percent there. Not that it was maybe a bad idea then, but I think we got a lot of momentum. We should carry that momentum. And if they feel the need that that has to be done, it should come before city council to approve them cutting that based on those borrowed funds.
And to think that perhaps could be part of a motion adopting the resolution that the certainly at the plat recorded, get the city attorney, actually, I've got a draft deed from the city attorney. If you want to, uh, I don't know if you want it back in front of council or you just want it a matter of record that.
I think just a matter of record. So then the pricing structure, as we agreed upon, is the pricing structure that goes forward, not being able to cut anywhere without further council approval. I mean, they can if, if council says, yeah, go ahead and do it. But if not, I would prefer that that money go back on debt service.
Agree. That's what we're saying. But didn't they have to come back to us for permission to get the discounts the last time they did that?
I don't think they did.
They didn't. We were also booking that revenue, it's general fund revenue.
Yeah. But it's, it's not going to the general fund this time. It's going on debt because we're borrowing a significant amount of money here. Not that we probably didn't borrow money then either, but.
Right. Right. So I think, again, I'll, I'll defer to our city attorney, but I'm thinking if the motion is to approve the resolution with the understanding that the CDA is to develop a pricing structure that would result in revenues sufficient to fund debt service on the borrowing that this council has said is to be repaid from lot sales. If that's sufficient.
Any other pricing structure would have to come before council.
Need with any alternative.
Yeah, with any alternatives.
We need that as a, a motion into.
We have a motion on the floor now, so just be adding that to that, which I would be okay with. I made it. Who seconded it?
I'll second.
I'll be okay.
Seconded it or?
They'll second it.
Okay.
This is attorney Sean Griffin. So I agree with Greg's position that certainly city attorneys create and limit the potential for this to be sold at a rate that is not amicable to the council. But what's on the table now is just the resolution authoring, authorizing the conveyance between the city and the CDA. So in terms of just simply proving this agreement, it's not necessarily crucial that this be put in the authorization of the conveyance right now. Direction of the council, we could certainly make that a term to the actual transfer of the property. But in terms of simply indicating the resolution, the authority to convey the property, that isn't necessarily needed right now. It could certainly be added if desired to this resolution, but we also retain the ability to have that current council direction at a later time as well.
Okay.
I would just like to add it.
Just keep it under now. Okay.
I mean, not that the CDA, CDA doesn't act in the best interest of the city, but when we're voting on money and money we're borrowing and expecting back.
And there's two council members on that CDA, so we will also remember that.
We'll make that a clear, I'll do my best to see that the CDA has that intent of the council in front of them and that becomes part of their minutes as well when they.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
The outlots on here, you said the city has to absolutely own those?
I think, well, the intent is they wouldn't be sold. They would be retained. They're part of the stormwater management system. And that's a case where I'm thinking, you know, the city is of course still owns the street rights of way. It makes sense for those outlots to be owned by the city proper and not by the CDA. Because the CDA is acting almost as an agent, as and is acting as an agent of the city in this instance for the lots that are being sold. But to be the owner of those outlots that in perpetuity are intended to be open space.
I'm just saying, maybe we could charge more for those and make it, and make a deal with the buyers or the owners that to realize they.
And Matt, if you want to speak to that, I would say there are some lots here where for stormwater, there is an easement being retained by the city. And those are lots, if you run the west side of Orchard Lane, I'm not going to call out the block numbers, but there are lots. Goodness.
Seventeen eighteen and on the north side of Sandy Ridge, twenty-five. The easterly twenty-five feet of each of those lots is also part of the stormwater management program or plan. And in talking to some builders, um, they actually recommended joining those to the adjacent lots. So basically the buildings can be built right up to the easement line where if that was a outlot, then that would be an interior property line and setbacks would apply to that property line and potentially result in a smaller home being built there. So by in allowing those to be attached to those three lots, the overall buildings, residences can potentially be bigger. Outlot one on the south side of Raleigh Court is primarily a wetland. And then on the south side of that, wetland is going to be another stormwater feature. On the east side of Orchard Lane is going to be a large dry detention basin adjacent to the wetlands associated there. And similarly, on the far west side, adjacent to lots twenty-three and twenty-two is outlot two. And that again, is going to be a stormwater feature, um, which we want to try and have control over. The three easements, again, the way the language is within the plat, the city has control over those stormwater features and the maintenance thereof. We don't want to pass that responsibility on to the property owner or you may not know what you'll get at the end.
Anything else? Uh, then this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawoski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. Uh, on to E, consideration of an amendment to the agreement for sale of real estate dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, as previously amended in June and September twenty-twenty-three between the city and Y Not LLC, pertaining to the purchase and development of the property at twenty-twenty-three Washington Street.
Council's seen the background on this before, so I'm not going to drill real deep on the staff memo. But as, as you all know, the former Unimart at twenty-twenty-three Washington uh, was vacant for over a decade and tax delinquent. The city in twenty twenty, I believe, uh, yeah, in twenty twenty acquired title to it through pursuing a, a section seventy-five one oh six agreement with DNR, which basically allowed Manitowoc County through the courts to assign its right of tax foreclosure on the property to the city. Uh, the city pursued that with the intent of pursuing redevelopment of that long vacant blighted property on Washington Street. It was, after it was acquired, it was listed for sale. It was for about four months, the subject of a purchase agreement that was then terminated by, with action of the council, including allowing for the refund of a non-refundable down payment. The city then pursued a request for proposals to redevelop the property. That was in December of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, I can remember there were a few people that we met with that showed some interest in the property. The basic tenants were the city would offer the property for sale for ten thousand dollars, wanted to see redevelopment, wanted to see whoever bought it come forward with redevelopment plans and commit to invest at least a hundred thousand dollars in the property. We got a formal proposal from Y Not LLC. Council approved that in February of twenty-twenty-two. And the agreement was signed between representatives of the city and the LLC in April of twenty-twenty-two. The owners presented plans timely to the plan commission to reuse the existing building, to remodel it for two or three retail tenants. Those plans were approved. And as was reported back to the council periodically, as the renovation proceeded, there were structural problems identified with the building. There was a partial basement identified under part of it. And basically the building ended up getting torn down in its entirety, except for the gas canopy that still graces the site. So, and I, I apologize, the last time this was in front of the council was February twenty-nine at the work session. You have the minutes of that work session where the council talked about options for amending or extending the agreement with Y Not. That didn't get back to council until, actually, our meeting two weeks ago when we allowed for some closed session discussion of that appropriately. I would mention if council wants to go into closed session on this tonight, at the end of the meeting, there is a closed session related to sale of property, if, if you wish. But going back to the minutes. Uh, but going back to the minutes of the council discussion in February, um, I did meet last week with representatives of Y Not, and uh they would request the council's uh consideration of uh the following terms, which I except for timeline, because we've had several months pass here, I think are largely consistent with what council had discussed, not acted on, but discussed back in February twenty nine. There first that, I guess this one is my term, we'd first need the LLC and the city to agree on the amount of Y Not's documented investment in the company. They've represented that between plans, demo, asbestos abatement, other things, uh, there's been about fifty thousand dollars invested. Now, whether that's all investments that are uh would have been counted under the development agreement, I I don't know. We haven't ver- we haven't verified those. Um, they would propose being given until the end of December of next year to sell the property or develop it. And uh I'd suggested a requirement the property be listed within thirty days of the signing of any new or amended agreement to make sure things are moving forward. Um, if that were to happen, this next one is like my suggested language, that the city would have a right of first refusal to match any bona fide offers received during that period. That could be fairly short, like the council would have ten, ten days notice to decide if it wanted to step in and acquire the property back instead of the sale uh that might be proposed. Um, if Y Not LLC were to sell the property during that period, allow them to retain a hundred percent of the sale proceeds in an amount up to, that is not to exceed the mutually agreed upon documented investment in the company, in the property, excuse me, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And consistent with what was at least suggested at council back in February, uh, any proceeds in excess of fifty thousand would be split two-thirds city, one-third to the LLC. So there's an incentive there to try to get more money for the property, but a share of that would go to the city. Uh, next point, if the LLC has not sold the property by the end of next year, then the city would have a one-month option period during which it could exercise an option to purchase the property back for the ten thousand dollars that was paid for it with closing to take place in a reasonable time, suggested sixty days. Um, and then if the property hasn't been sold by the end of that extension period and the city hasn't exercised that option to purchase, then neither the city nor Y Not would have any remaining obligations under the agreement. Now, those changes also assume that the penalty provision that was in that agreement, that payment to the city for the delta between demonstrated investment and what's actually spent would uh no longer be effective. That was uh, that was the discussion back in February again, is my understanding. So if the council directs that these key terms or other key terms you might direct tonight be included in a new or amended agreement, I'd proceed to work with our city attorneys to work up a full agreement and bring it back to council. And uh, if the council feels tonight this needs further review, there's the option to go into closed or another alternative not to pick on personnel and finance, might be to refer it to that committee, which has had some development agreements referred to it in the past on some of our TIFs, for example. But this was the discussion with Y Not last week. And this isn't meant to be a final agreement, but to get feedback from the council on certain key points.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? Sorry. Yes, Adam.
I like the the agreement for the most part. Uh, what I just want to know is on the first one, when it says Y Not and the city must first agree on the amount of Y Not's documented investment property, is that in concurrence with the original agreement of what they can document expenses for?
That's a very good question. I would contend it should be because it did exclude direct costs by any entity that I don't have to be agreement uh open, but that that's controlled by or owned by the parties to the agreement.
Right, because we we generally do that with all of them. So I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be part of that.
I believe that would be consistent, yeah.
And then when it goes down to three more, if Y Not LLC sells the property, uh, the not to exceed should probably change to not to exceed the amount that they document versus just fifty thousand dollars. Otherwise, if they don't document fifty thousand dollars, the agreement would be fifty thousand dollars, even if it's undocumented.
Thank you. Yeah, I I wasn't real clear there. My intent there was to say.
Right, I I know what your attempt intent is.
That's usual, as usual, that was Greg saying too much, actually.
Yeah.
Um.
I know your intent. I just want to make sure it's it's right on there.
Yep, but uh, that's what's intended, and that was anticipated that whatever that agreed upon number is, it ain't, it's not going to be more than fifty.
Right.
That that could.
But only pay up to what they have documented.
Correct, and which has been found acceptable by this council.
Right. And then personally, I think it's a little long of a date, December thirty twenty twenty five, and February we gave them a year, and they're going above a year.
Yeah, all I can say is.
But that that can be up to everyone else, obviously up to everyone else too. It just, to me, it seems a little long.
All I uh uh recalled hearing on that last Friday, when Friday morning when we met, was that it might be kind of slow through the winter to try to market it, but it all depends on if somebody's looking for a site. People buy property in the, at all times a year.
Bill, did you have something? Okay, sorry, I thought your hand was. Anyone else? Any other comments, concerns?
I just want to point out that that not to exceed the actual cost does not include the original ten thousand dollars that they.
Good point. That that would be the intent as well. Thank you. Good point.
Yeah, because we would get our ten. Yeah, we already. Yes, correct. Yep.
Right, that in the original agreement, that the those documented costs were not to be inclusive of the purchase price quite.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we will look for a motion to direct the city manager regarding key provisions, which we just talked about, to be included in amendment. Thank you, Adam. Seconded by Bill. Any other council discussion?
Well, that's indicating the council's concurrence with proceeding to an agreement that includes the key provisions identified here with the clarification on documented costs, only to include the type of costs that were in the original agreement, which would speak to that issue of work done, I'll say in kind by the investors and the purchase price as as Doc had mentioned.
Correct. And up to fifty thousand, but only they get to go against whatever they actually documented.
Uh.
I'd like it to be a little shorter, but not part of the motion.
And again, I just make it clear, and I think council knows it, that, you know, the agreement we have is enforceable. And people out in the community may have varying opinions on it, but uh uh, I think when it comes to dealing in good faith with local parties that have made things happen in the community, uh, some may say it's wishy-washy, and some may say it's trying to work with local businesses. The city does have a track record of working with people versus penalizing them. That goes for the history of this property. It goes for some others.
It's an it's an extension of another extension. We get it, but the parcel also sat vacant for a very, very, very long time.
There were some very exciting plans that were put forth at considerable expense. Didn't happen, but it also sat vacant for over ten years, so.
And that doesn't mean that just because they got an extension here, we're just going to extend it for forever of time either. I think we've given them two or three extensions. I think this is probably the final one.
I think council is to that point now where this is pretty much, I mean, we're not saying it, but.
We're pretty much.
We're pretty much, yeah.
By the way, it was referenced in uh those minutes from the end of February. My understanding is that, you know, the city no longer, if if you do opt, if the city council opts to take title to this property in the future, we would not hold the LGU exemption because that the conditions precedent to that are you you acquire it through tax reversion for blight elimination. Uh, I'm forgetting some of the other reasons. Well, those were fine up until the point it was sold to another party. On the other hand, if you look up the DNR records on this site, there's no further action required with regard to the uh contamination from leaking fuel storage tank there. My understanding, other than if you encounter those contaminated soils at depth, they have to be disposed of properly, so. There are not ongoing obligations relative to the property other than that.
Okay, uh, anything else? Seeing nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
All in favor.
Onto F, authorization for the city manager to execute the WDOT pedestrian crosswalk permit applications for Taylor Street and Memorial Drive, State Highway forty two, Columbus Street and Memorial Drive, also State Highway forty two, Madison Street and Memorial Drive, State Highway forty two, and Twelfth Street and Memorial Drive, which is also State Highway forty two.
Yep, and frankly, when I when I first saw this agenda item submitted, I said to our city engineer, how come? Jeez, I've never had to do one of these permits before. We have other state highways in town. Well, what it comes down to is Highway forty two is state trunk highway right up to and including that intersection at Lake and Twelfth Streets. We've rebuilt, the state has rebuilt other sections of trunk highway, or excuse me, of state highways in the city, but in the areas where they're considered connecting highway status, and the city does maintenance and has more access and pedestrian-related controls. So this didn't apply when Lincoln Avenue was rebuilt, because that's all local maintenance jurisdiction, at least from about TR buses on in. Uh, work that's been done on three ten has been within the area that's considered connecting highway within the city's jurisdiction. Not so with Memorial Drive. So while these pedestrian crossings are planned, and we understand included in the DOT's plans, they tie into the city's sidewalk system, therefore, the city has to sign the permits. So with all that as background, please give me that permission, because these pedestrian crossings are a good thing.
Okay, uh, looking for motion, authorize city manager to execute the applications. Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Doug. Any council discussion?
Is there one on Twelfth Street?
There is a crossing to be on the south, uh, from on the south side of the intersection uh at Twelfth, Lake and Memorial. Uh, the state is not, is proposing to eliminate the one, is planning to eliminate the one on the north side because of safety concerns given site distance, which sadly, people are still going to try to cross there if it's the shortest point.
Is is the application for that one in our packet? Because it says we're voting on all of them.
It should be.
Yes, it is.
Take a look. Ah, very last one. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just for a little color commentary, when Memorial.
I just, I was looking at speed limit. It says forty five there.
Ah, yeah.
Where it changes to twenty five.
We wish we could get them to change the speed limit a little bit as you come into town, but uh they'll be redoing the crosswalks at Twelfth Lake and Memorial. There will be a marked crosswalk for the first time at Madison and Memorial. There will be one at Columbus and Memorial, uh, made possible in part by the city ordering in the sidewalk on the west side of Memorial, and the DOT eliminating some of the guardrails. So you don't have a pedestrian crossing that leads you into a guardrail uh on on the lakeside. And then finally, there'll be a crosswalk out at the signalized intersection at Taylor uh in Memorial. Now, we do have money budgeted. It was budgeted last year as well in TID number twelve. Um, expecting that as soon as that project is done, the city would seek DOT's approval to put pedestrian activated signals at Twelfth Lake and and Memorial, and also at Madison and Memorial, the random rapid flashing beacons or RRFBs, more than you asked for, but uh like at the Maritime Museum and the Manitowoc Library in our neighborhood in the south. So that's the whole picture.
Anything else?
Greg, I um, I support these applications and for crosswalks. We have money budgeted, but if the budget isn't enough, do we come back to approval for any excess costs that are higher than the budget amount, or is that the procedure then?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, honestly, out of that TIF budget, we ended up underspending significantly what was uh borrowed and set aside for the sidewalk widening, because it didn't have the barrier wall that we all thought it would have initially. Uh, I think right now, Matt, we're s- we're budgeting at forty thousand dollars per intersection for the RRFBs, because they need to be not only on each side, but one in a two-sided one in the middle because of the four-lane highway. But if it goes over what's in the budget, we'll definitely be back here at council. Yeah.
Anything else? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. Uh, for information only.
Yep, just briefly, as Adam mentioned earlier, the Personnel and Finance Committee will have what should be the final meeting for their review of the twenty twenty five budget. Bright and early tomorrow, we actually are going to get out of here at a decent hours tonight, but that's eight o'clock here on third floor, either in this room or the committee room. Can't miss it if you come. Um, work session next Monday, November twenty five, six P M, inclusive of the public hearing on the twenty twenty five city budget, which is now posted, has been for about a week now, out on the website, is available for public review. And then after the Thanksgiving holiday, the next regular meeting, Monday, December two, uh, at six P M.
Okay, and close session tonight?
Yeah, and actually, as I was gulping for air there, I may be reaching out to council. If everything, excuse me, if everything goes well with plans for the proposed new apartments at Three Thousand Forest, those folks were in for their preliminary meeting with Plan Commission at the November Plan Commission meeting last Monday, uh, to talk about their plans, forty six new apartments, eight million dollar investment. They'll be back at the Plan Commission's December meeting on the ninth. If we've moved things along with getting a development agreement in front of council, and that's one of the things I hope to talk about at the work session next Monday, that development agreement will also have city council final sign-off on the design for those buildings and that site. I'm thinking it would be good for the developer and probably good for the city if we could convene a joint meeting of the city council and Plan Commission, possibly on that regular PC meeting night on the ninth. So everybody's sitting down around the same plan set, or maybe with the plan set up on the wall. So we aren't, we don't have any gaps between what the Plan Commission might be requiring and what this council requires. So we'll we'll reach out to you folks and see if that works and if we can field a good quorum, but um, here's hoping that we have a project to uh actually see action on in December. So, sorry, I meant to bring that up earlier and forgot.
That's fine. Uh, so, closed session. Uh, the city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin Statute nineteen dot eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, discuss possible property acquisition, discuss possible assistance to development agreement or project, and discuss matters pertaining to property sale agreement. Uh, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Mark.
Before we go into closed session, would you be able to notice one more thing?
Sure.
Could you notice, uh, confer with legal counsel about compliance with open meetings, uh, law pursuant to uh potential litigation?
Yes, what you just said. Is that good?
Don't work.
Okay.
Duly noted.
Duly noted, exactly.
Is that a different statute?
It is a different section. Do you want to give the statutory site on that, uh, Sean, Attorney Griffin?
B parent, one parent G, correct, Sean?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay.
And I would note the council may take action in open session upon reconvening. If you do, I, you you may.
Okay.
Just in case anyone who's not here wants to come down.
Come back here.
From the public.
Okay, uh, this will be a roll call vote, then, Amanda.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Bill Leclerc. Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thanks for that.